Good afternoon. This special meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. The clerk will read the role of the members.
Parker.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Yes.
Schleifer.
Middleton.
Here.
Torrance.
President.
Gray.
President.
Bullock.
President.
Porter.
Here.
Blanchard.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Glover.
Here.
Ramos. Cohen.
President.
Mr. President, we have a quorum with one absence of Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before we move to bills on second reader, I would like to remind all members of the rules for voting. Before each vote, I will call for any discussion or debate. Any member who wishes to abstain from a vote must do so before the vote begins according to Rule 5-5C. Any member who wishes to explain their vote may do so after all members have voted. You'll have five minutes to explain your vote. We need to stay on schedule to start the Special Board of Estimates meeting on time at 3:00 P.M. Please refer to Rules 5-6. With any questions, the Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the rest of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the council. We have one objection. Councilman Schleifer, care to explain your objection?
I think it's an important... Is this working? I think it's an important, you know, three items on the agenda. I think we can splurge a little bit and just read the full titles. That's my objection. Thank you. Okay.
Duly noted. All right.
Pulling up the full titles.
Pulling up the full titles. Full titles shall be read.
City Council Bill 25-0060, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2026. For the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2026 year, lead sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration.
Chair recognizes Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee held a series of hearings on its bill between May 28, 2025 through June 4, 2025. Following a hearing, members submitted a series of changes which are included as Amendment 1. At 12:30 today, the Budget Appropriations Committee met and moved the amendment favorably. I now move the amendment favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the committee amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. Amendments are moved.
Mr. Pr-
Yep. Apologies. Chair McCray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on the amended bill? Chair recognizes Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an amendment that I'd like my colleagues to consider. And I am trying to get it printed out so that all folks will have an opportunity to understand the amendment. The amendment is... I'll explain it and hopefully we can get everything printed and shared out appropriately as soon as possible. So if you'll bear with me. So the amendment is tied to an initial movement of $7 million from the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund to the mayor's office in order to support a couple of programs within the mayor's office. This has been an issue that we've talked about during budget hearings and it's been frankly a point of contention for myself. It's something I tried to work with the administration on, but unfortunately we reached an impasse and there was a disagreement on whether or not this should be done. Part of the reason why I'm bringing up as an amendment is because in the Charter, this is a change of the Charter that was voted on by the people of Baltimore. Eighty-two percent of people supported this. And Council President yourself also supported this change of the Charter, as a number of other members on this council have. It says in limitations to youth that the Children and Youth Fund may not be used to substitute or replace funding for the children and youth programs or services provided in the ordinance of estimates, which is what we're voting on now, fiscal year 2017, except to the extent that federal, state, or private agency funds for those programs or services have since been discontinued. One of the things I requested from the administration was any instance that justifies a cut for youth programming that would justify this movement. That has not been provided. I tried to work with the administration and suggested that we make it alone. That was also not something that was agreeable. And so we have suggested a change to the ordinance of estimates that would cut $7 million from agencies, various agencies, that have a significant number of vacant positions. And we would return the money on condition that they provide to us a budget and... They would provide to us a budget and... Oh, thank you. Can you submit this to the council members? Thank you. That they provide to us a budget and deliverables for this youth fund money. We understand that some of that money will be used for some of youth programming, specifically for late-night instances where we've had issues, which I'm pleased to hear. That's something that we're focused on. I also understand that some of that money will be going to Youth Works. But I have real concerns about the transparency for certainly the rest of that money, even with some of the money that I do agree with. I do believe that it is a responsibility of this council to not be a rubber stamp in a situation where we're seeing our president ignore the Constitution. We certainly should not just rubber stamp an instance where our mayor is positioning himself to unfortunately bypass the intention behind the bill that created a charter amendment. This is our highest governing document for this body. So I want to make sure that we are doing our job, that we're just not a rubber stamp. And, you know, one of the things I'm calling my members to do is really think about your responsibility to our charter, to our constituents, to the eighty-two percent of people that supported this effort. You know, we're not here to be rubber stamps. We're here to do a job. And when we ask our council members to do that job, sometimes it's going to be something difficult. So that's the amendment. It should be on everyone's desk. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer questions about the amendment.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. Is there any debate or discussion on this floor amendment? I will begin by saying I will be voting no on this amendment. However, I do appreciate the intent to lift up the importance of the youth fund as a vehicle to support community-based organizations. I think there is ample opportunity for us to do so in legislative oversight as well as in legislation. I sincerely appreciate the hearing held by Chair Bullock and Chair Conway where several of these issues were discussed. Clearly, there is work to do, as we heard from both the Chair but also from the... In several of the budget committees, to make sure that the youth fund is serving the purpose. That said, I will be voting no and would entertain any other discussion or debate.
Are we working now? I just... I agree with everything that you just said, Mr. President. And I don't take our votes lightly. And all of us have our own individual relationships and negotiations and just asking questions individually as we move on throughout the year with our mayor and with you as Council President. So I don't take lightly being labeled rubber stamp. And Youth Works is a very important part of helping and moving forward with the young people in the city. And it has been a very successful summer tool in teaching our young children how to be prepared for the jobs that they get into. It's a learning experience that we need. And I support the recommendations. Did my own investigation and research and I'm comfortable with the mayor's decision on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, any other discussion or debate? Hearing and... Oh, I'm sorry, council-
I don't think this is the right... It's on it. It doesn't say youth fund or... I don't think this is the right one.
Chair recognizes Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I explained earlier, and maybe I should explain a little further because I tried to pack in a ton. So the administration is looking to do a number of, I think, very important programs this summer. And in making this cut, I wanted to make sure that we didn't stop those things from moving forward. I certainly want to make sure we continue to support our young people. It's very important that they're able to get jobs and that we're able to provide opportunities that keep them engaged and don't lead them into getting into trouble because there's nothing to do this summer. So this does not cut money from any of those efforts, in part because I want to see those continue. And I think we would all agree that those are really important efforts. Where this does cut money from is from agencies that have, you know, to the tune of $44 million of generally funded positions that are over eighteen months old, some of them over three years old. So there's a lot of wiggle room within our agencies in order to make this happen. But I would say this, you may be concerned about whether or not cutting from these agencies would stop them from doing their job. And I want to assure you, that's not a problem here. The intention is to return this money to the administration, but we want to be crystal clear. Once again, we don't want to be rubber stamps here. We want to be crystal clear about what the delivery of services will be and what we're asking for from the administration. If they're supposed to provide resources to X number of children or pay for X number of positions, that's not clear to us right now. We've held a hearing with Chair Bullock in which we detailed some of the needs across the city. And some of the partners that rely on this youth fund amount of money were noting that there were 12,000, 12,000 positions that were unfunded for young people this summer. Those positions are still not funded. Yet we are looking to take $7 million from the youth fund to fund these initiatives. Not saying that that's a bad thing, but what I would say is how it's happening is incorrect. And if anytime in the future, a mayor wants to pull from any fund that this council or any future council creates, they should work with the council to do that. That's what I'm saying here. So, you know, I'm not... I'll put it like this, I don't want to have to introduce this amendment, but I've been told no by every other stance. And I'm calling upon my colleagues. I understand you guys have all made deals with the administration and you all have your parks and your playgrounds and things that you want to see happen. And I want to see that happen too. But we have a responsibility to stand true to our charter. We have a responsibility to stand true to what we've committed to. And so I ask you to have a backbone here. We have a responsibility. Let's do what we need to do.
Again, appreciate the council member. I will certainly say this is not a body of rubber stamps. Madam Vice President, did you have your hand up?
It's money from my understanding is surplus. So we don't want to get our words twisted.
Understood. Any other discussion or debate? I'm seeing Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question for the author. Isn't Service 726 school health? I just want to make sure we're not cutting nurses at schools.
Councilman Conway.
So yes, it is the Health Department and yes, it will impact that program. But once again, this is a very simple request of the administration. They can settle this in a matter of a week or two. If they simply come to an agreement with the youth fund about what they're going to deliver, this should be something that we can very quickly repair.
Hang on, hang on.
I will also say, in reading the actual Charter, which I have here printed, the continuing nature of the fund, notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, of this Charter, unspent portions of the Children and Youth Fund, one, remain in the fund to be used exclusively for its specified purposes; two, do not refer to the general revenues of the city; and three, their appropriations do not lapse. So this is... There's no such thing as surplus funds here. We have to be crystal clear about what this money is intended to be used for. So this is not that.
Councilman Torrance.
Does this work? Okay. I hear you, but school health by law, through our agreement with the state, we have to fund. There is no silo in school health. We are mandated by the state. Those were negotiations from 2016 and 2017 that we approached in good standing with the state to fund school health in the city of Baltimore. I just want to make sure that like, as a person who fought hard for that funds to be made sure it's dedicated and it wasn't coming from the educational dollars that our young people are experiencing right now, given city schools is deficit, I think that we need to have a... We can't just warehouse funds that would go... If I'm looking at this correctly, the average cost of a nurse is around $90,000. We're looking at losing almost fourteen of them. And that's fourteen schools that may go uncovered without a nurse. I just want to make sure that we're aware of the cut.
Wait, hang on. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to be clear, when I looked at how I would structure this amendment, the first thing I did was I went back to that list of vacant positions that are over eighteen months old. And I tried to be very sensitive about locations that I would pull from that wouldn't immediately stop critical functionings for the city. And so when I looked at that part of money, the Health Department has $9 million of vacant positions that have been vacant for over eighteen months. Of those $9 million, $6.8 million, $6,886,394 have been vacant for over thirty-seven months. So I do believe we do need to fill these positions and I agree with you 100% and we should. I think the request that we, you know, that I'm proposing, that the administration meet, is an eminently reasonable one. I mean, we could go call the youth fund right now and say, hey, look, we need an agreement and we should be able to get that done by the next board meeting. And then be able to get that to the council so that we can actually move these funds right back over to them. So that's... I agree with you. We do want to see that program happen and I'm telling you that we can still make that happen.
Councilman Torrance, one more and then we're going to vote unless Councilmember Porter has something after. No? Okay. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just worried because me and Councilwoman Porter, we paid special attention to school health. There are vacancies because we're trying to align the funds with grant positions and then also pay for what is the cost of an actual nurse, not just a school health aide. So I think that we have to be mindful that this may complicate the conversations that are happening behind the scenes to move it forward for this coming school year. And I just don't want our state partners to look at us like we did not... We failed to meet the muster in this one.
Councilmember Porter? Nope.
Yeah, so... President, sir, I just want to clarify. So I just checked with the budget director. Forty-four percent of those, that $6 million that you're talking about, are grant-funded positions. They are not act... Okay. Should we bring it up to the budget director?
Wait, hang on. Councilmember Porter, still has the floor.
Yes, so forty-four percent of them are grant-funded positions. They are not positions that are solely based on the general fund. So that $6 million that you're talking about are already earmarked for our... Earmark funds that are grant-funded and not specifically from the general fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. Councilman Bullock?
Can I?
No. Nope. Going to go to Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think we have the information we need to have a vote.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Conway, then Middleton, and then we're voting.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that is coming from general funds. I sorted for all funding... I sorted out all funding from state-funded positions or federally-funded positions. This is strictly from the general fund. So these are not grant-funded positions.
All right. Madam Vice President, and then we are going to vote. And folks can then explain their vote afterward.
Perfect timing. I just want to remind our council members, we're colleagues. And can we refrain from saying comments that are offensive to this council? We can agree to disagree. We can talk and discuss, but we are... We're representing a city. And we need to do this respectfully and not be offensive and make offensive comments. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good one to end on. I'm now going to call... I am now going to entertain the amendment. Councilman, you want to move the amendment?
I'd like to move the amendment.
All right. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Parker?
No. Yes, it's standing. No.
McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter?
Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much. So I just want to ground us again on this amendment. You know, I definitely appreciate the sponsor's intent of this particular bill to fund youth services. However, taking it from necessary services like the school health department, where we still have to provide them a minimum amount of coverage. And I just got this number from the budget director. $2.8 million is for school health vacancies. And so that $2.8 is within the general fund. So again, while I appreciate the intent, I think that this was poorly organized. I think that having a conversation with council members on various issues that they do stand for along within this budget would have been the courteous thing to do. And so therefore, I'm voting no.
Blanchard?
Councilman Ramos, floor is yours.
I'm a no for several of the reasons that my colleague said. But I do think that this brings up, and the whole situation brings up, that we do need to examine the Children and Youth Fund. We know that some of the funds that are being used for the Youth Works, which I believe have to be used for Youth Works, I want our kids to have those jobs, was from fund balance. So there's an issue with whether or not they're actually, you know, being able to spend the money. So I think that that's important and I look forward to those discussions. But I'm not in favor of how this is done in terms of taking from other places. Thank you.
And finally, Cohen.
I'm going to explain my vote. As I said in the beginning, and similar to what Councilmember Ramos just said, I think there are means to do proper oversight over the youth fund. I think it is in everyone's best interest for the fund to shine and do all the things that we expect it to do. There have been discussions about uses of the fund. And I think those are important conversations, but I vote no. The final vote is 14 to 1. No, the amendment fails. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the consideration. I understand you may think that I put you in a weird position, but I did not. I did not. I think this is important for us as a council to consider our responsibility to the fiscal responsibility of the city. And I think we all appreciate that that is a difficult vote. I think we all agree that the youth fund should not be spent that way. And I know it frankly is very difficult to have to consider cuts otherwise, but frankly, it should not have been sent to us this way. We should not have been put in this position. And so I...
Councilman?
I thank you. I thank you. I thank you for considering it. I understand your hesitation. I understand the agreements you made. I do think it's incumbent upon the administration to be very thoughtful about these things in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it. All right. Any additional amendments, floor amendments for consideration? Councilman Parker, did you want to explain your vote?
I did. Sorry. It comes with being the first district and being a rookie around here. Thank you, Mr. President. I very much appreciate my colleagues' attention to this matter. When we were first informed about the movement of funds from the youth fund towards supporting these very important initiatives for the summer, I know that sent me back both to the Charter as well as to the authorizing legislation for the youth fund to make sure that in fact, this was appropriate. My own reading, and we certainly had lots of conversations in different hearings here and during the budget hearings, is that per the letter of those laws, as it currently stands, it was an appropriate redistribution of those funds. Per the spirit of them, I found it to be, again, not because the purpose wasn't good, but I found the spirit of those laws indicated that money was not supposed to be used that way to fund general fund purposes, however important they may be. And so I look forward to returning to that conversation by looking at the Charter and the authorizing legislation to make sure that in the future, that it's tightened up so that everyone in this council, at BSOIF and the mayor's office, everyone has a clear understanding of exactly how the funds are to be used and moved around. And so we're all on the same page. I don't think that this amendment was the right way to get us there today, but I do completely agree that we need greater clarity and I look forward to those conversations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. I'm going to move on, Councilman Torrance. Can it be a 30-second? Real quick. Thirty seconds, you're on the clock. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. I enjoyed this. I enjoyed this discussion, but I think that one of the things that was lost in translation is about Youth Works. The bulk of Youth Works money is funded through actual them reaching out to others to actually pay for their actual program. The city contributes a portion. I think that we just need to understand that breakdown so that we understand that this may not have been a violation of the Charter, so that we can have that clear discussion. It came up in their budget hearing. They explained it articulately how it was distributed. I think that we just, as a council through oversight, should make sure that we look at the holistic approach of each agency's budget, but also where those funds are coming from. Because from someone who's been advocate for Youth Works, I recognize that they raised almost $19 million, apps at the city of Baltimore almost. So I think that we need to have that broader conversation too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Are there any additional floor amendments for consideration here? Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you've seen this right before the committee hearings, so this is not a new amendment. This is... Can I have some help, please? Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Colleagues, I'm handing out this amendment that you saw earlier today. It is an attempt to try to fund one new position in the Office of the Inspector General. The Office of the Inspector General has been vital for our city. Because of the office's detailed investigations, thank you, over $17 million in waste, fraud, and abuse have been saved this past fiscal year. In addition, there have been significant policy changes within city government for better oversight and management. Currently, there are 33 cases being investigated and 23 cases backlog. The OIG is in need... The Office of the Inspector General is in need of at least one position to assist in that backlog. And there was an enhancement requested and was denied. And so this is my attempt to try to at least get one position. The amendment proposes moving $112,000 from the State's Attorney's Service 115. This does not take away positions. It's simply an amount of funding for one position for the OIG. This transfer of funding does not transfer one position. It transfers funds from one... From the office that has not been using two positions. And those positions have been vacant for over three years. And also, of the five positions that we heard in the hearing that were vacant, three are certainly going into hiring and the other two still need to be classified. And so it will take a minute to spend that money. So again, I just have to say, because people keep asking me, this is not a political statement. I very much value the work of the State's Attorney's Office. In fact, as you heard in the hearing, I asked for the State's Attorney's help in making sure that those folks who were arrested in regards to the Greenmount and Venable shooting get, you know, his... Make sure that they are addressed accordingly. And so again, you know, obviously, he's... The State's Attorney's Office is getting that additional funding for body worn camera as well as other positions. So honestly, this was the only place where I found that, and this was me, that found dollars to be able to transfer. So colleagues, I also know that in a rule of view, we've had conversations with the OIG. I have as well. And this is just very important to get the position. And I will work with the State's Attorney's Office. I'll work with the OIG to make sure that we're taking care- to make sure that we're taking care of next term, but we, or next year. But the immediate need for the OIG is very important, and she does need that additional position. So I do hope that you'll take this favorably and vote in favor of this amendment. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Before we go to debate and discussion, are there any questions for the council member about this amendment? I see Councilman Schleifer.
Can we just get some clarity on why specifically from the State's Attorney's Office? When, from the hearings, when we spoke about the very few temporary vacancies that there are in the State's Attorney's Office, I think it was Mr. Beckham at the time, gave a really thorough explanation as to, you know, how quickly they hire and how quickly those turn over, when these OIG positions are for, to be in DPW and to be in DOT. So why not just take one of the many vacancies from DPW and/or DOT?
Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleague, for that question. So, again, when I was at the hearings, I had heard very clearly a plan from each agency as to how they were going to fill those vacancies. And what I heard very clearly in the hearing of the State's Attorney's Office was that, well, and let me just say that a lot of our agencies knew that they had to either do better recruiting or they needed to combine positions in order to raise salaries for hiring. So that there was a plan in every single agency. Here, absolutely, he's getting more positions that have been funded, that were frozen. He's getting the additional money for the body worn camera, which is extremely important as well. So the five vacant positions that have been vacant for over three years, three of them are absolutely getting hired, and that was what they said in the hearing. The other two, and I verified with the finance director, are the ones that were left over from the previous administration, that they have not classified. They have not sent out the job descriptions. They have not done anything yet to be able to even create the classification. I get that they want to do that, and I'm glad that they do want to do that. And I think that that's something that we can look towards for the next fiscal year.
Other questions for the bill sponsor? I see Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much, President. I want to go back to 20, I think it was 2016, 2017. There were two additional pins that were already accounted for in the OIG's budget. Where were those two pins? And how do these additional pins factor into that calculation?
Councilmember Ramos?
I'll just pick up my microphone. How's that? Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleague. The OIG is fully staffed. They have zero vacancies. They are also able to hire quickly. And like I said in my statement, they are, they have done amazing investigations that have helped our city, as well as making sure now, you know, there are 23 that are pending cases because they can't get to them. And so they have absolutely used all those positions for investigators. They only have just a couple for administration to be able to assist, but she's, most of them are investigators. Thank you for the question.
Other questions from colleagues? Okay. Is there debate or discussion on this amendment? Madam Vice President.
Thank you. It just shows that you clearly took your time and worked on this, worked with all parties, and communication is definitely the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Anyone else? Councilmember Blanchard, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're seeing a lot of great work being done in the State's Attorney's Office. We're seeing a lot of great work being done in the Inspector General's office. I share, I think, the concern slightly of why, why coming from the State's Attorney's Office specifically. But as we have an amendment that was, for a $400,000 increase to the State's Attorney's Office as well, I feel, I feel good about this adjustment that's being proposed on the floor.
Other discussion, debate? I'm going to echo the previously made point. I think that these are two extremely high functioning offices within our city. I think that our Inspector General has done an absolutely outstanding job of identifying fraud, waste, and abuse, saving the city money. And I do think that she should get this, this position. As I shared with the council member earlier, I am concerned about it coming from the State's Attorney's Budget. I do believe that State's Attorney Bates is doing an outstanding job in the violent crime fight. We are seeing record reductions in homicide, non-fatal shootings. That is in part to his credit, the mayor, the governor, the police department, community, everybody. And so to me, I am uncomfortable moving money away from his budget. That said though, I will be voting yes, because I do believe that thanks to the hard work of Chair McCray and the Budget Committee, there will be some additional dollars going to the State's Attorney in the larger amendment. But I would just recognize that we have two agencies that are doing the work in our city. Other debate, discussion, seeing, hearing, none? Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. In the course of looking at various amendments and concerns about the budget, I look closely at the State's Attorney's Office, and I recognize that they have a significant amount of money that's old vacancies. So, you know, I think the money's there. That said, I do think the money for DOT and DPW embedded positions is best coming from DOT and DPW. And that is in fact what always happened in the past. Prior to this Inspector General, when we had positions embedded at DOT and DPW, they were funded by DOT and DPW. And so I would just ask that after we pass this amendment, as I hope we are about to, that we maybe endeavor into some sort of mid-year adjustment in order to have that money come from where it more appropriately should come from. Thank you.
Duly noted, and thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Seeing no, all right. Last one, Councilman Conway, unless I got one more? Nope, we're going to vote after Councilman.
You guys have been hearing a lot from me. I apologize, Councilman. Council President. I just, I appreciate the intention, and I think I got a call from someone in the State's Attorney's Office worried about this. And I think it's sort of difficult in instances where we propose moving from one elected office's office to somewhere else. That makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I do agree with the intention here. I do have, I do take pause a little bit with the State's Attorney's Office. So I'm probably going to be a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. All right, we are going to vote. Councilmember Ramos, please move the amendment.
I move the amendment.
All those in favor of approving this amendment say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Roll call. Parker? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dorsey?
We'll say that people may explain their vote after all members have voted.
That is true.
People to explain their, their vote on the previous round of amendments, but I'm happy to wait until the end if you like.
Appreciate that. Councilman, your vote? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos? Cohen? Yes. Councilman Schleifer, would you like to explain your vote?
Yes. So... So while we're all laughing, I just also want to point out that when, you know, per council, per the previous, you know, acting on the councils, that when councilmen from the 3rd District and I agree on something, usually that counts, that supersedes all the votes, and that we should, we should be able to make that adjustment. And so I just want to say that, you know, I support, fully support the OIG. And I not only think that she should get one additional position, I actually think she should get two additional positions. I've been on the record saying that. I brought that up, you know, throughout this budget process. And while I appreciate the amendment, I also feel like the State's Attorney's Office was very clear on their plan, on how they plan to fill the very few vacancies that they have, and how meaningful that is. While DOT and DPW have many longstanding vacancies that they would not miss or not even know was taken from them. And so I do hope that pins, even after this process, that there would be two pins moved. If anybody wants to know how to move pins, I could, I could show you. But you can move pins and take one of each and put it in the OIG's office. And so hopefully, that's what happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Anyone else like to explain their vote? I am seeing Mr. Dorsey and then Mr. Torrance. Councilman?
Actually, I don't want to explain my vote. I just want to explain my point of order and say no intent, no intent of disrespect. It just took me, after the previous amendment, looking at the rules to reassure myself that the rules I actually do say. But you explain after the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to thank the council for voting for this amendment. As the person who represents the Silver family, this is personal to the district, but also the right thing to do. And I look forward to discussions about if we can move additional pins that way as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank Councilman Torrance. Looking for other folks? Seeing, oh, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to explain my vote really quickly, while it's a tough decision, choosing between two really effective offices. The reason for my vote is I know during our hearing with the Office of Attorney, Inspector General's office, they said they had 23 backed up cases. I mean, since then, they now have 27. This is kind of a matter of urgency, whether or not we feel like we could use the money right now immediately versus where it could be used at later on in the future. While I know the State's Attorney's Office is doing great work as well, look forward to, you know, finding ways where we can make sure we make that, that office have all the resources possible in order to operate in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any other explanation of votes? Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
Thank you all for explaining your votes. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor, is there, I'm sorry. Is there any debate or discussion on the amended bill? Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair, for moving this amended bill. Mr. President, I'm very encouraged to see that the $2 million has been included in this amended bill for the Mayor's Austin migrant fairs, and that resources to get us started on important composting initiatives on the pathway to zero waste in Baltimore City are also included. Speaking at, speaking specifically about the funding for MEMA, the inclusion of funding for legal services and resources to support immigrant families is and must be a top priority for this council. And I'm glad to see that this amended budget reflects that for this council and this administration. I'm grateful to my colleagues for their engagement and support throughout this process, and I'm grateful to the leaders and residents from communities around the city who have been steadfast in their advocacy for these programs and this funding. Their voices have been heard clearly in City Hall and found receptive and supportive partners on this council and in this administration. In particular, I'm grateful to Mayor Scott, Council President Cohen, and Chairperson McCray for making this a priority in our city budget as it stands before us. The support from city leadership and that partnership with engaged residents hasn't been relegated solely to this chamber or to conversations here in this hall. Last week, I was pleased to join councilmembers Ramos and Jones, as well as representatives from Mayor's Office and MEMA, to stand together with hundreds of community members as we marched the streets of southeast Baltimore to condemn the intolerable and unjust attacks by Immigration and Customs Enforcement on our immigrant families and neighbors. These attacks are breaking apart families, spreading fear, disrupting the daily lives, work, worship, study, recreation, shopping, and more of neighbors across our city. We are all in this together. An attack on one of us is an attack on all of us. Last week, I was proud to stand in community with you, Mr. President, as we walked through our neighborhood main streets, visiting business owners and sharing important information with them about their rights during these uncertain times, and how to help protect their staff members and their daily operations from disruption. And I was overwhelmed as we stood together on Saturday with thousands of our neighbors on Hampstead Hill in Patterson Park, alongside Senator Van Hollen, Senator Ferguson, delegates Clippinger, Lewis, and Edelson, Council President Cohen, and Councilmember Ramos, to reject harmful xenophobic, transphobic rhetoric and white supremacy in all of its forms. We stood in community, together, expressing by our presence, our words, and our actions, a shared understanding that we all belong to the city and that the city belongs to us, and that no officials in Washington or masked folks roaming the streets of Highland Town can say anything different. These additional resources are about two things, ensuring constitutionally protected due process for our neighbors and providing support for families in need at this time. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you again to the mayor, the council president, and the chairperson for prioritizing this funding.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. Thank you for your leadership on this important work. I did, apologies, want to go back quickly and announce the results of the previous vote, which were 11 yeses, 5 nos. I will now return to any debate or discussion. Anyone else? Four? I'm sorry. That does not make sense. I believe it was 11 and four. Thank you, Councilman Torrance, for being very good at math. I very much appreciate you. Chalk that one up to, I didn't do as well on math. Thank you. All right. Any further debate or discussion on budget? I see Councilmember Ramos.
Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity, and I just want to thank Madam Chair for, I think, managing a great process and really working hard so that everybody comes to a yes. This is really important. And also for your leadership and the mayor's office leadership as well. And also to my colleagues, I think we had a great, we had a great session. This budget is really significant. Not only is it a major statement that we are fully funding the request to assist our residents, but it is also, you know, a real statement around our investments in our communities, particularly around addressing vacant and abandoned properties, and that we're making sure that our priorities on our young people and so many others are funded. So I think this is a good budget. I think it was a great, a good process. And I look forward to voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Are there any other debate, discussion? Speak now or forever hold your peace? All right. Madam Chair, if you could, move the amendment. All right, moved it. All right. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. Roll call. Parker? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Afterward. Yep, you got it. Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos? Cohen? Aye. Any council members that would like to explain their vote? I first saw Councilman Schleifer, and then we'll go around.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now is not the time to raise taxes and fees. Our constituents are struggling to make ends meet with the skyrocketing utility bills, especially with the unnecessary water bill rate increases that have quietly and continuously been raised. We have had constituents come in here and tell us they are choosing between their oxygen tanks and their utility bills. What kind of world are we living in that our aging population that built this city is being forced out of their homes because of our high property taxes, fees, and utility bills? And now, every time they call 911 for an ambulance, medical attention, for an ambulance or medical attention, it's going to cost them more. Or if they call for a taxi to get to a doctor's appointment or to the grocery store, it's going to cost them more. These costs are already too high and unaffordable, and this budget is only going to make it worse. It's not fair to be raising these taxes and fees on items that our constituents, especially our older adults, cannot avoid. While over the past five years, some age- While over the past five years, some agencies' budgets have exploded, and many leadership, many in leadership positions within those agencies have received historic salary increases, and many others have received massive overtime payments, yet our lowest wage workers have continued to be left behind. While programs and outside groups have received millions in funding to pay their employees, our own employees have not received the raises they deserve, which could have easily been paid for time and time again, instead of the countless other non-direct service delivery expenditures. After years of fighting alongside my colleagues and bringing attention to the, to this matter, our DPW workers will soon be receiving salary increases. Hopefully, those increases are proportionate to the increases people in leadership positions have been receiving. Lastly, with gains in public safety, with the all hands on deck approach from our city, state, and federal partners, now is not the time to be cutting from public safety agencies, especially not those who have gone above and beyond to provide direct protection to our communities. Because this budget prioritizes taxes and fees, and it's at the worst time while rolling back support for public safety, that is why I voted no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. I see Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me, but I do think it's important that I explain why I voted no, and I do that, and it's not an easy thing to do. So I, to no one's surprise, my issue here is with the management of the youth fund, and how, you know, we are allowing this to move forward. I do think it is our responsibility, as we have taken an oath in these positions, to stand by the Constitution. I think we also do take very seriously the responsibility to our charter, and I understand the difficulty in looking at a last minute amendment as being presented by myself. But I do think it's incumbent upon us and our colleagues and the administration to do our absolute best to stand by the charter, to stand by the laws that we pass, to stand by our votes, you know. So I, I do believe it is my responsibility, as it is everyone's responsibility here, to figure out ways to address issues like this. It was my hope that this concern was addressed well before we got to the floor here, and unfortunately, it was not. So I, I appreciate the intention. I do think there are a lot of really good things on this budget, a lot of really good things going on. I'm really happy to see some of the things that we discussed in this hearing, in, in budget hearings, actually addressed in the budget. I do appreciate the effort of the administration to hear out the concerns of this council. Unfortunately, in an instance where we are directly contradicting the intention behind the charter, I just cannot stand by that. And so for that, that's why I voted no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Conway, seeing Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Council President Cohen and colleagues. I'll be very brief, I just wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks to everybody who played a role in the process. Chair McCray did an excellent job, members of the Budget Appropriations Committee. I think it's important that we come into this and looking at the fact that people come in this with the best of intentions, and budgets are difficult, and, but they are also statements of priorities and where our efforts are going to be in this city. So again, thank you everybody who played a part. There's some lessons learned throughout this process. Those who submitted amendments, whether they be successful or not, helped move along the conversation. So again, thank you, especially to the leadership of this fine committee.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. We will have much more to say on that on third reader, but appreciate the point well made. Anyone else want to explain vote? Hearing and seeing no one else, this bill passes with a 13 to 2 vote. This bill will be printed for third reading.
Chair recognizes.
Sorry, Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
Mr. President, I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Aye.
Schleifer?
Aye.
Middleton?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Blanchard?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today at 5:00 PM.
City Council Bill 25-0061, annual property tax for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of mayor and city council of Baltimore for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and setting the semi, semi-annual payment service charge for that period. Sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration.
Chair recognizes Chair McCray.
Mr. President, the Budget Appropriations Committee held a hearing on this bill. The committee voted to approve the bill as reflected in the materials for today's meeting. I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Please note 1 ne, 1 in the negative and 14 in the affirmative. Councilman, do you want to explain your vote? I would like to get to the Board of Estimates, so.
So get it.
Okay. All right. Chair recognizes Chair McCray.
Mr. President, I move to invoke City Council Rule 10-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Aye.
Schleifer?
Aye.
Middleton?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Blanchard?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today at 5:00 PM.
City Council Bill 25-0075, operating budget for the Baltimore City School Board, or Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City School Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2026, providing for certification of the approved budget to the state superintendent of schools, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President at the request of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners.
Chair recognizes Chair McCray.
Mr. President, the Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on the bill. The committee voted to approve the bill as reflected in the materials for today's meeting. I move the bill favorably.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.